Okay, it's seven o'clock. We need to order first of the pledge of flag and access America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody to the 2024 Casco Township Board meeting. The first, the first order of business is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve?
I support.
Okay, we have a motion to approve consent agenda. Do you have any support?
Support.
There are a motion to approve the consent agenda and support. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes.
Silver, yes.
Yes, okay. Motion carries. Okay, hold business. A is accept bid for township hall addition. Okay, we have one bid here from trademark construction LLC.
I thought you were going to, I'm sorry, I thought we were going to let Mr. Moore speak first so he could get onto his next line.
We actually had a Zoom first after we did this.
You have to do old business first. That's how it's done.
All right.
I mean, I guess we didn't even do payment of bills.
Yeah.
Okay, we have one, we had one bid from trademark construction. This is the addition for approximately 2,500 square feet to provide a second ADA compliant voting precinct here at the township hall as well some additional office space to support our activities. I'm here.
Before you go further, I'm gonna cut you off. Because we just got this, I didn't have time to look anything. I don't feel comfortable voting on this today. I don't know what the other board members feel like, but there's stuff in here that I would like to go over and maybe talk to Kurt about.
Would you prefer to have me delay this, you know?
I would like to delay it, but I don't want to delay it for a whole month.
I agree.
But like this redundant one on here, I, I don't agree with that. So, and I didn't get a chance to look at anything, but I, I can't make a decision right now.
Okay.
That's just my opinion. If you guys want to go ahead and vote, I, whatever.
I would never consider a vote without people listening.
Yeah, I agree.
That's not.
I mean, this was just handed to us.
Yeah, three, seven, eight, nine, yeah. So, I mean, I totally agree with that.
They're doing the best they can.
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll hold a special meeting if you don't mind when you've had a time to review it because you're going to be on town for a while.
Right, we are, we are gonna be leaving on Monday, so maybe I get more to hear something out with you guys when people are available. Do that.
Yep, give me a couple, you know, a couple hours.
We'll talk tomorrow. We'll talk tomorrow.
Kurt here, Kurt Singstock, is our construction manager. I can tell you right that he's doing a great job. I mean, he is doing a pretty good job pouring down on this responsibility. I have no doubt once we do approve it, that project is gonna go very well.
I agree.
I do ask that we still address the tree, the bid on the tree removal. It's a really significant column. Okay, the next one is Tommy's Party Store update. I got a thing from Chris Anderson. The owners of Tommy's Party Store does not pay their taxes in 2022. So, if they do not pay by the 31st of March, 2025, the billing is, is gonna go on the board chair. I'm gonna explore ways how we can possibly legally get cleaned up before then. I guess it'd be up to consent of the owners. I know the place looks bad. I know when I see John Moore, he's a lot complaints at the hall there, but I'd love to just go there myself and clean it up, but we have to do something legally. We can't go onto the property, somebody gets hurt and that. I know it's, it's an ugly thing, but we've got to do this legally and get it done. So, it's a process, a lot of legal process. The second one, the sign update. Chris talked to sign fabricator Lisa Baker there. She claims the fault is ours because we installed a timer. But I, we were told by a technician inside fabricators to install a timer there. So, there is a mixed up communication and that sign was working for a while there after we took it off the timer.
It was not working right.
But.
The time's always been wrong.
So, myself, I just didn't.
Did you, did you look through stuff and see if there was anything written?
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna do that this week there. Myself, it appears that there's a dispute between sign fabricators and works direct. That's because of internal electronics. That's what both Chris and I are getting an impression of. So, we're gonna work this issue. The last one, network computer. As of today, Chris has not heard from the highbauer, from highbauer law LLC about the network computer issue. Okay, any questions?
With respect to that sign, I think whether, however it gets resolved, we need to get it fixed.
Yeah.
It's too bright and it's not right.
Yeah.
So, I hope we start making investigations about who's gonna fix it.
Yeah, I've been saying that since day one.
It needs to happen. Whether there's a cost that they're not gonna cover, we gotta cover it. It's our sign.
Okay, the next one is new business is MyTextGov.
This is a Zoom and it's supposed to be at 7:15, so I don't know how long the city of Richmond, if it's gonna be quick, then I'm thinking it would be all right if we just pop them in there real quick.
Okay.
If that's all right with you guys.
John and Rob will line up for your presentation. Yeah, this is our Richmond fire contract. I'd like to be approved. I wrote last month. This is a five-year contract. It's up and Mr. Moore here from the city of Richmond, city manager, do you want to work and explain?
Thank you. I had sent along the kind of marked up version of contract, the signature copy and then kind of a budget calculation. I hope everyone didn't see that in your bag. That's the same sort of, I'm ashamed. The nuts and bolts of the contract language really haven't changed in probably 30 years. And so, really with this five-year contract, what we're trying to address, kind of two things. One is the cost of equipment. Two years ago, we were able to buy a engine. It was $640,000. Two years later, that same engine would be about $850,000. So, slowly, we've been trying to increase that portion of the contract. We go towards a certain acquisition. Last, last five-year contract, we did it incrementally. This, this contract, we proposed about 18,000, going to 18,000 the first year and then 1,000 every year thereafter going up. Again, that's not even gonna probably get us to where we need to be, but it's at least an effort to do that with an understanding of we can't just go too, too quickly with the townships and say all of our resources are limited. So, we're, we're trying to do it kind of a little bit in the time, but the first year will be go from 15 to 18 and then that'll be 1,000 each year. The other area of the contract that we were addressing, as far back as I can see, which is about 45, 30 years, the contracts always included an amount of $200 per run. That part of it was to go for a center personnel cost. Our, our volunteers get currently, or with, with the new budget starting July 1st, they get $20 per run. Now that, whether they're there for 10 hours for any to fire or there for an hour, it's $20. So, that, that, when I came, you know, back in 97, I think that was around $10, $12. It's slowly gone up through the years from $12, $10 a run to 20. So, you know, we were very thankful for all of the people, the volunteers on the department that are willing to come out and do that for that amount of money. It allows these contracts to be manageable. And so, that's the other area. We're taking that from $200 per run to 220 and then towards the end of the last three years, the contract would be 250. So, those are kind of the incremental changes. Again, the basis of the contract with Casco, Columbus, Richmond Townships and the city of Richmond, it's all based off a five-year run average and that we pay a percentage of the operating costs, the personnel costs and that. But based on what our percentage of the five-year runs are. And so, a couple of weeks ago, we met with Colleen and Joe, Bruce, Percy from Columbus Township. And then a couple of days later, I was able to meet with Chris Devos from Richmond Township. So, tonight, we're here to answer any questions you may have and then we'll be heading to Columbus Township because they're also meeting tonight. So, thank you for kind of doing this early here. And then we're meeting with Richmond Township tomorrow night and the city council on Monday. So, hopefully wrapping all these up. But if you have any questions, both you, friend and myself are here.
No, maybe self-explanatory.
Yeah.
We do have a question.
Sure.
There's a clause in the contract that says, this might not be of any consequence, but it kind of jumped out at me. Any annual increases in the fire fun operational budget that exceed 10% of the previous year's budget will provide, will provide for this contract to either be terminated or the conditions to be negotiated. Somehow, that seems on the face of it reasonable. You know, if you have some increase, it's unexpected, but two things concern me. One is the word increases. Does that mean any internal increase in the budget or any overall increase in the budget?
Increase to the budget. And what I can point to is on the budget calculation, there's the operating expense. When we have increases on our side, we do increase that portion of it. For the last couple of years, we've increased it by the rate of inflation where your taxable value goes up. Like the last couple of years, it's on 5%. Previous to that, whatever it was, it was two and a half. That went up two and a half during the downturn when our budget went down. We did not, obviously did not increase that, that number. So.
So, we really don't expect some major surprises here.
We do not, no.
Another thing though is.
It just allows us to kind of cover, we all know that every year the, the cost of everything goes up.
If just something like this did happen and you had to renegotiate, would we assure that there'll be no gaps in service?
Correct.
I mean, if you had to terminate, come back to us and talk again, we'll still.
Obviously, with fire services, we've, we've always done that and, and that was brought up by another community that if we didn't get this done by June 30th, what would happen July 1st? If we assured them, probably it would still come on July 1st.
I'm glad to have you on.
That doesn't allow us some flexibility and as the costs go up, we have an outlet. We've been tying that to the rate of inflation that all of our taxable value goes up.
So, John, for this quarter there, Casco pays $16,352.
So, yes, correct. Yes. The last column shows, the, the second to last column shows your annual cost and then we bill quarterly. So, we also put in what we bill you quarterly. So, yes, $16,352.52 is what you're quarterly billable.
Now, Rob, that's true that any Richmond, you could be a member of the volunteer fire department via a resident of Casco Township?
Yes, actually, anyone in, within our service area, which is whatever our service area is with Casco, whatever the county's in. And actually, I live in Casco, so I'm right on beat.
All right, and you, no, trucks usually last, you say about 10 years.
Typically, we always used to try to get 15 was the rule, kind of the rule of thumb. You're gonna start kind of watching it after that and get into more maintenance costs than it's worth. But lately, with the way the trucks aren't, a lot of the runs we've been doing, we're probably around 10 to 12. And recently, we just got some smaller rigs to run on some of the non-fire. So, we're not running a big truck on a wires down. We're not running it on a seal line.
There's all grass one going out in St. Clair.
Yeah, actually, we had one. Yeah.
All right, any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sarah.
Okay, I guess we need a motion to.
I make a motion to accept the 2024, 2025 Richmond fire contract renewal. I think it's good through, what, 2029?
Correct.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion support to accept the 2024 Richmond fire contract for a five-year contract and in 2029. Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Steven, yes.
Silver, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for kind of moving us up. That does a lot of assumption.
Rob, have the guys bring the rest of God at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's what I, actually, they texted me on the way and I said I would probably be better if we're cutting out early. Then I'll take, bring it to the next meeting. They'll actually meet, but we'll present.
All right.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
All right, take care. All right.
We can discuss, I'm just, we can discuss it until they.
We have a thing from TextMyGov. This is a system, a system that uses to send out text alert to area residents.
So, this was, they just, they hailed us. It was probably like a cold call thing, but sounded interesting. So, we had a Zoom, actually two Zoom meetings with Caleb and we just wanted to bring it on the board to see what you guys thought. And it's, it's pretty cool. What happens is you get a list of numbers, like you just ask the residents if they want to sign up for this. And for elections, like if we have any kind of mass text, we can just send, you know, don't forget early voting starts, you know, whatever day, and then you send it. And then if they want to opt in, they can hit reply yes. If they want to opt out, they can hit reply no. And it's basically, it's for anything. It's not just elections.
They can put a link on our website when we get our website and everything. Yeah, you can use it for other words, any kind of road closures, whatever the township would like people to know. Right, like when taxes are renewed, when, you know, for close for, you know.
I'm texting you in the middle of the night.
Like, like another service send out?
I think we would.
I don't, yeah, I don't think it needs to, and we would have to send something out.
And we can schedule things and it all, you like, you type it in.
Kind of like that, yeah.
But people would have to, they would have to.
Opt in. Well, what they said, I mean, we could put on our Facebook or website, you know, if you want to sign up, here's the, it's one of those numbers where you text, you know, sign up or whatever to 73 and da, 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 da. And so, they could do it that way, but they also have something where they, they do like, what do they call that when they find out phone numbers?
Reverse search.
Something.
Yeah, like, yeah, they do a search and then they can find as many people and then they'll send out like.
They'll send out a thing that's.
Do you want to belong or like sign up for those or whatever.
But they're, they're here to talk, you know, they can talk someone. Can you guys hear us? Hi, man. Can you guys?
I can hear you.
Yeah, for some reason, it's not picking it up on the TV. Oh, yeah.
Can you guys hear it all? Yeah, can you guys hear us? Okay.
I wonder if you move it closer out that way.
Pretty good.
Yeah, you're on our big TV too, so.
I have settings. I'm trying to see if I can. All right, now try talking.
Yeah, is that any better?
Perfect. Now you can turn that.
Okay, yeah, all right. How it worked out. That's a success right there. So, awesome. Well, yeah, once again, appreciate you letting us be here real quick to present. My name's Spencer. Here at TextMyGov, the editor as well. Yeah, we appreciate it. We'll just kind of go over TextMyGov real quick. It's really just an option. You can always be able to send out those text notifications about really anything you want to there at the township itself. The whole goal is just to make your life a little bit easier, help get our information a little bit quicker. So. TextMyGov is a company. We work exclusively with local government across the United States. And in the states of Michigan, we work with quite a few cities and townships, kind of helping out with communications there. So, when it comes to our program, the nice thing is, is that for your residents, just as long as they've got a cell phone that they can receive texts on, that's all they need. They don't have to download an app or anything like that. So, we find that even there's some folks out there, you're still using the flip phones and everything and we're able to reach a lot more people that way. And then for the township, we provide you with an online program. So, you're gonna usually do it from your computer. And that's where we're gonna send these messages out from. So, the nice thing there is that you don't have to have like a special township phone that this runs through. You're never gonna get any text on your personal phone about any of this stuff. We have a completely separate online program where you're actually to be sending these messages off from. And then once again, we can really leave it up to you guys to be able to send out whatever messages you want. For example, we work with like St. Joseph Charter Township and these are some ways that the residents can sign up the text alerts. We have a marketing team that will work with you directly. They can provide flyers, QR codes that people can scan and then folks can sign up for the notifications. And it's totally up to you guys. If you want to just do like one big group, like St. Joseph Charter Township did, you can do that. Or if you want to break it out into different kinds of notification groups that people can sign up for, whether that's taxes, leading updates, road closures, whatever you want, you can also do that too. And you can have individual groups. And we also will help provide information to go on the website. So, as you'll see here in the bottom right-hand corner, it says, sign up to receive township text notifications. You can put in your phone number there and then directly opt in from the website, making it super easy. And then last thing is we do database import. We have a free database that we offer to folks just to be a head start on getting some of the folks there in the township signed up. We did the information from USPS and it's based off of the zip codes, the zip code for the, for the township. So, we went and got an estimate based on the zip code for the township and it's gonna be able to pull, the initial number is around 2,000 phone numbers for the area. And then our team will go through, we remove any landlines, any non-working phone numbers and making sure that it's everyone living within the boundaries of the township, so removing anyone that may fall outside of those boundaries. So, it's probably gonna be a little bit less than 2,000, but still, that's gonna be a pretty good amount. And typically, what we see is about one number per household. So, it really should reach quite a few of the folks off the bat there with the township. And then we would have you guys send out an opt-out message. So, saying something like, hey, this is text for township. Yeah, we're gonna use this to send out text alerts. If you don't want to receive those, text stop. And then they can opt out either by, but typically with other municipalities that use our free database, they find that about 90% of the residents stay opted in. So, only about 8 to 10% actually opt out, which makes it a great way to help folks get engaged and start getting the text alerts from you guys. So. That's just a little overview of TextMyGov. Wanted to leave it up to you guys and whatever questions you had. So, what questions do you have for us?
Could you do that demo on what Caleb did with us with, with actually putting in the phone number and doing the text?
Yeah, totally. We got the option here. If you guys want to try like texting into the program, you're welcome to do that. And then as well, like we can, I can also show like how someone can opt in directly for the text messages, whatever you guys would like to do then.
So, it basically said, thank you for contacting Casco elections. Need to register to vote? If so, please see the link below to register online. And there's actually a link to the state, state of Michigan that you can click on and it gives all of Casco's information, which is kind of cool.
Yeah, that's into part of our program too. We do have it where we can set up these pre-created auto replies and then that way, if the resident texts in a question, once again, that can be elections related, taxes, questions about meetings. And then our program will say, okay, someone texts in a question about taxes. And then, yeah, it'll shoot back that message, whether it's a link to a website, a form, just the answer itself. And then that way, your staff don't have to actually sit there and type out a response. And the goal there is to help folks in their after hours or during the day to organize a front call.
Any questions?
Awesome. Any questions for us about the program?
Um, can you tell us some of the other municipalities or townships that you serve and how many there are?
Yeah, totally. I think over the entire state of Michigan, we probably work with, man, close to 30 places, whether it's cities, counties or townships. So, we work with St. Joseph Charter Township. We just started working with Gaines Charter Township. We just started working with the city of Flint and then just, yeah, really quite a few that I can name off the top of my head. So. Yeah, quite a few. And then across the United States, we work with over 700 municipalities.
Okay, I, I just have a question. I probably, I'm, this is, that's, people have to sign up themselves, right? When we tell them, go to our webpage and get the instructions and to sign up?
Yeah, there's, that's one way. They can sign themselves up. Yeah, like we're on the website here, like for St. Joseph Charter Township. And then also with our free database, that's where we'll be able to pull in some of the phone numbers for the district and then you guys can send out that opt-out message.
Oh, okay, understand.
So, that will just kind of give you guys a head start on helping folks get signed up for it. And then anyone who's not included in that can always come in here and manually set themselves up.
Okay.
Save a data, save a data, take it from the USPS based on our zip code.
Yep.
Man.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Question, you know, like, I'm always concerned about security. So, how is security run on this? And how is, how are we assured that nothing untoward would be on there? You know, you see all the different conversation groups, Chesterfield Township, DuBaldur, whatever, you know, all of those different groups. How are we, how is that monitored or how is that taken care of so that nothing inappropriate turns up?
Yeah.
Great question.
Yeah, great question. So, with our program, you guys get to choose which staff members have the ability to send out messages. When you text MyGov, I'm not gonna be sending anything out. So, it'd be totally up to you guys. When you text MyGov, I'm not gonna be sending anything out, so it'd be totally up to you guys. Um, our program has it where whatever staff members you want to have access to this, will have their own unique username and password to sign in to access the program. You can also limit people's access as well for your staff. Um, but yeah, because it's totally gonna be you guys sending out those messages, then it'll be totally up to you on what information goes out there.
How do you determine your pricing?
Yeah, great question. So this is a proposal being sent over, our pricing is simply based off of the population of the township, and then also how many text messages we would provide. So, the pricing right now, as it stands, is three thousand dollars a year. There's a one-time setup fee of fifteen hundred, because you'll have a dedicated project manager that's going to train the staff on how to use this and help set up the program for you. And then we offer you ten thousand texts a year to be able to send out as well.
So that's less than, based on the population of townships, so that'd be less than a dollar per resident, because we have just under four thousand residents here in the township.
Yep.
And it's a free year, automatically renewing contract?
Yeah, you have the initial agreements for three years, and then after that, it just continues year to year.
Are any of your, um, clients, uh, is there a client list available on the internet? Because I couldn't find one, I was looking to see, you know, who else you serve across the country. I did find eight hundred, number eight hundred, but I didn't find anybody, except one by accident. From an industry.
Yeah, totally. I'm not sure if we have, I don't think we have like a published list of every single customer out there on the internet. Um, but we could definitely send over some references as well.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Totally.
I have another question, how do we know that you don't sell the phone numbers?
Yeah, we listed in our agreement that we don't sell or share any of this information, so it'll just be for your prices use.
So just be, that search of phone numbers will just be Casco, those and, or else six four, then, um.
That would be anywhere.
Correct. And we'll even look at that, um, the, the database, and we'll remove any, um, because they have phone numbers and addresses, and so we'll remove any addresses that are outside of the township's.
I'd like to know more about their competitors, I mean, just as a matter of making such decisions. And I'd like to see more of that come forward at, you know, when we're reviewing, uh, such a proposal code like this.
Is there a way you could send, um, email me a list of, um, some of the other, um, townships or cities that you guys work with, just so we can like pull it up and look, okay.
Yeah, we can definitely do that, we'll have right after this, and we can send you our two competitors as well that we typically ran into, that'd be like a code writer and Excel. I think the big difference between us and other programs like that is typically other programs are just for emergencies. Where our program, your notifications can be, should be used for emergencies, but you can use it for any and what kind of work you want. Um, and then, as far as I'm aware, our program is the only one that offers that text-in option with the automatic responses, um, like you guys had seen there with the elections question.
What concern I, I mean, it's neat that sends out texts and that, um, it's just that our, the amount of actually volume, I mean, we're kind of quiet, I mean, it gets busy at certain times, but there's gonna be large period where really nothing's gonna be going on, so. Just, yeah.
Yeah. So the price is the same, right, you're bad, yes.
But it's under a dollar for residents, that's, uh.
So how about if,
Have good points.
How about if we do some more looking into it, and we can put it on next month's agenda?
Sounds good.
And make a decision for next month? I think that's, alright.
Sounds good.
Does that sound good to you guys?
Sounds good.
Did you hear?
Yeah, no problem, we'll email you guys, um, within twenty-four hours of our some references as well as, um, those two competitors, and if you have any other questions, just let us know, but once again, really appreciate your points tonight.
Thank you, Spencer.
Thank you.
We'll see you guys later.
Everybody, bye.
Thanks, you guys.
Are you disconnected?
Yeah, yeah, I, oh, go ahead.
I don't know if you guys are familiar with Everbridge, the county already has.
No.
Okay, um, if you contact Emergency Management, Rustic Grease. No.
No? You didn't, oh, I don't know.
Is it okay?
Uh, Rustic Grease with Emergency Management, the county has Everbridge, and there's no cost to the township.
Oh, oh.
You can't run that emergency all over.
It's not, I don't believe it's for emergencies, but there's no auto reply that they have.
Okay.
So if you need to send out information, you can send out information. I was a nine-months dispatcher for ten years at this county, working for the drain office, and
Okay.
we had to do monthly tests, so it's not a hard program where you can actually circle areas, so if you say, hey, avoid this area, we got a spill, you can send it out.
Everbridge?
Everbridge is the, Rustic Grease, if there's like the wizard on all that, he's with Emergency Management, he's there Monday through Wednesday.
Okay.
Um, I just, while this is going on, I texted somebody from Emergency Management.
No, that's perfect.
Like I said, it's something. Yeah, you know, I guess my question was, it's like, why, why does all of a sudden, or, or, I don't want to say you, is the township doing an inadequate job of getting information out as it's handled now? Do you not have people, well, I'm just saying, did these guys reach out to you, or did you see?
No, they reached out to us.
Yeah, okay, that's, yeah.
It's just, I guess.
You know what I mean, yeah.
Well, there's more of an expectation to get information out to people these days, and this is.
There's a few questionations.
There's people in the office who answer the phone.
Yeah, we have a township website, and we also have our Facebook.
I think at this, my own feeling for the, at this stage, this is, uh, maybe for some years ahead, but I think we're pretty adequately covered now. I was concerned about the emergency stuff, because I think we need that. Looks like you got it covered, thank you.
Yeah, they give you login, or everybody in the county.
Well, you brought up the, the fact that you have the website and all that, I, I'm like, I don't know, I know I'm not that techie, but I had, I can never get in, I can never find this.
Well, it's down right now, that's probably, it's been down for the last few months.
Yeah, we have Murphy.
That's why. The data website is under construction. I think before this, we better fix that.
We have.
They're doing a job right now, the website's being worked on.
We, we, we're having a new website built right now, they said they're gonna be a seven-dollar test page later this week, or next week, for us.
Is a new company doing it this time?
Yes, yeah, Schumacher, Schumacher Technology Group, they have a good reputation, they service a lot of communities.
Thank you.
They do the MTA, a big organization.
I'm not saying the media's always on YouTube.
Okay, um, there's questions at the end, uh, we gotta move on. We have two gentlemen from the Drain Commissioner, there's a Mr. Wiley, and Tony, you told us our, one of our.
Useless is fine.
No. I guess, well, but we'd like, there's a lot of, I would say misinformation going around out there about the township's responsibility, and with drainage, especially in the drainage district. I tried to get, um, Bill Hazelton from the Road Commission here, if he can't make it, he'll be here next month to answer the road commission issue. So I was wondering if you could address the audience on your operations, and what exactly the Drain Commission does, and the township's responsibility, and the residents.
Well, since Bill's not here, I'm just gonna play him, I'll just play Road Commission, but we're trying our best at the drain.
Do you guys want to stand up to us?
Sure.
Do you have that map? That large map?
Hydrate map?
Yeah. Is it easily accessible?
It's in my office, under the wall, isn't it?
Is it, so.
With thumbtacks.
So.
So, while he's doing this, I, I can kind of talk about what's going on with our drain office. So, we work really well with the Road Commission, and there's a lot of times where, you know, typically, if there's a road ditch that has an issue, and it doesn't flow, um, residents should call, they usually will call the Road Commission, but the Road Commission will defer them back to the township, and then you guys will travel roads and make lists of, you know, um, the worst road ditch to the best, have you done that yet?
Oh, yeah, I, I've worked with, um, Megazolts and everything, all.
Definitely, great guy. Yeah, so, so you guys will make your list, and then you'll say, here's the, here's the ten drains that we can afford to clean, and you put it on the Road Commission's list. Well, out of those ten drains, if there's a drain that drains into a county drain, and, you know, since I've been in office, we've done twenty-nine petition projects that I inherited, plus another. That's our, that's our morning exercise. That's our cardio in the morning.
There you go.
Everybody together, and then do our aerobics.
There you go.
Get everybody up.
Yeah, I'm usually one in the back.
I'm the one that can dance up there.
There you go.
But, uh, so if there's a county drain that, that doesn't flow, more than likely, the Road Commission will say, well, we don't wanna dig up this ditch until the county drain is dug up.
Yeah.
Now, when it comes to a county drain, under my jurisdiction, we will go in, we'll do, try and get away from petition projects, because they are just ridiculous expensive. And we're doing more maintenance now. And, um, we got, we got all the twenty-nine petition projects out of the way and finished, we did the fifteen to twenty that came in while I was in office, and maintenance is a lot more reasonable. And may not be able to do the whole stretch, but we will work, you know, for a couple of years to get it all done, so the water's flowing. We get a ditch that's got a problem, and the Road Commission doesn't want to do anything, call us, and we'll put that on our to-do list, so you guys can get your, your road ditches.
Yeah, Murphy had to have seven, Tony down some, I don't know, two or three, um, drains checking it out, and, yeah.
So, so, um, our two project managers are always out there in the field working, meeting with people. Now, when we do get a project, the way it works is, there's the county at large, will give an assessment. There's the township at large, and it could be two townships, they'll get assessments. Then we go to the property owners within that stormwater shed, that will get assessments. If there's a state road. And that will get an assessment, because they drain into the drain districts. If there's railroad, railroad will get assessments, um. So just, schools don't, churches don't.
I don't think they can see this up here or not, but, uh, these are the different section numbers of the township. Um, most of the road labels you'll find are over on the edges here. Um, but anything in blue, light blue here is the drain, and this dash line is the edge of the drain district, so that's the watershed, so anybody that lives inside that dash line, their water goes to that drain. Look, that, these get modified from year to year, June or July.
What?
Usually we do the one ninety-seven. So the way they used to do it is they would section it off like this right here, this straight line. Water doesn't follow straight lines, where water doesn't follow, you know, property lines. So we've been modifying them to match where the actual ridges are that are going across properties, so that, you know, some people paid for decades, centuries, centuries.
We gotta pay centuries.
Well, yeah.
But yeah, we've got people that would pay, because the old surveys show these straight lines right through a field, and, uh, with this one ninety-seven, the state felt that they should give us the power to go in and adjust these lines. And there's a tool that, that the county has paid for, it's called LIDAR, it's a laser imagery of a plane flies over, shoots down these lasers, and the lasers bounce back up, and it's a total for the way the land lays, and we can look at it, farmers love it, so. I, I would suggest farmers.
Farmers stop in our office all the time, hey, I need to know where this field's supposed to go.
Yeah, and, and it's like a psychedelic color that shows the way the water wants to travel. So, based on that, we can redesign or reroute our, our lines from regular lines. The people that were in that shouldn't be, we take them out, the people that are out of the drain district that haven't been paying, that should be, we bring them in. Some people get upset, I get it, you know, I hadn't paid anything for years, and all of a sudden I can put back in there. Yeah, it kind of sucks, but, you know, hey, we're, it, we're trying to make it fair and even across the board, so if you're not in, we pull you out, if you're in, we put you back in.
Hey, county roads, you pay on county roads every single year, whether you get work on your road or not. County drains, the only time you pay is when we do work with drains, so. And it's just, it's at the break even, we don't, we don't bank any money to, you know, we might bank some money to spray the drain with pesticides.
In the future, well.
Weed killer, but that's, that's very minimal, it's usually about ten percent of the entire project.
Now, this way, you submit a petition project, that's where property owners in the drainage district, they sign a petition saying, hey, St. Joseph, we want you to clean out, you know, so-and-so's drain.
Yeah, let's just say you've got a drain issue with your property, it keeps flooding, and, um, the, 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 you got a problem?
Oh, okay.
So, the state law for the drain office, it protects the minority, if you've got five people that are flooding, you know, everybody sending all their water down to you guys, and you're flooding out, well, typically it's majority vote, would, you know, it would go that way. But you got a hundred people that aren't flooding, and five people that are, if we get five residents to sign a petition that says, hey, we're, we're having a problem, we can take a look at it, get the petition signed, then we go before a board of determination, where the, the houses that are being affected show up, they voice their opinion, and the board, uh, will make a judgment call whether we make it a valid project or not. I mean, we're not, we don't wanna spend a lot of money, but we do wanna try and help everybody that is flooded. If your problem is, if you're not in a county, uh, like a, um, drain district, then you put petition to create a drain, uh, we've had a few of those, the TELTO drain.
I think this is where the TELTO drain was set, right here.
Yeah, we had a petition go out
Twice.
to do a drain, the TELTO, the proposed TELTO drain.
Yeah.
But a bunch of residents got together and said, we're signing a petition not to do it, so, poor folks.
That was twenty years ago, those people have moved.
Nineteen eighty-nine. Well, it was, it was considered too expensive that time, yeah, according to.
And it's still downtown.
See, yeah, and, and it could possibly be turned into a county drain to where we can get in there under maintenance and just do the section at a time, to keep the cost down low.
It's a two-step process, if it's not a drain, you have to create the district.
Right.
That goes through a whole board and all that, and they have to create the, the drain, and then if
Easements.
you need easements from everybody.
Yeah, Jim Arx, suddenly they have flow documents showing out.
It's a process, a long drawn-out process.
So that's, this is the proposed TELTO drain, when it was proposed, um, and that basically be so, that's where the TELTO drain, those are all mapped to wetlands, now, when you go through a wetland, if it's not a drain, we have exemptions under the law if it's a drain. Creating a new drain, with current, current climate in the state.
We'd have to do stream studies and.
It could happen, I don't think you'd like the price tag.
So, so what you're saying right now, you're, if you find a trouble spot, that's what you're dealing with right now, to open up drains?
Yeah, if, if there's a beaver dam, we'll get in there and take care of the beaver dam. But there may be a stretch, we, coming down here along Pulse, there's a drain that's just chock full of trees.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, it's a deep drain, water still flows, you know, is it worth getting in there to, we, we got in one year and kind of opened up a section of it, but where it's large, you know, a large ditch, it's not really necessary to get in and open it, uh, I'd like to, but why spend the money?
Little, I don't have a ditch, and I don't have.
If you're talking road ditches along the road, that's Road Commission.
I've already talked to the mayor. I've already talked to the mayor.
That, a lot of people consider road ditches county drains, and they're not, they're county road ditches and the road.
But there, there are some ditches along roads that have county drains, yeah.
Pottagat Road has Pottagat drain that runs along the road.
Yeah, I think on Church.
Only on one side, yeah, yeah, county drain on Church Road.
Yeah. And so what is the best way for a person who's not sure if it's a water course, if it's a drain, if it's, all they know is that there is water standing in their yard?
Give us a call.
Whom do they call first, you or the Road Commission?
If it's along the road, I would call Road Commission first. If it's not a primary road, they're gonna redirect you back to the township. And then if, if the township goes out and says, yeah, this, this road has a road ditch there, but it needs work. If it's not on a primary. If it's not on a primary road, then the township can sign a work order to have the road commission fix it.
And who's at whose expense?
Is that half and half to the residents and to the?
Well, if it's a road ditch, typically the township has a certain amount to spend here. And then the road commission matches.
Yeah, our annual, um, where we do have a mountain, we spend, we could go over like this year, we're doing some extra ditching like we did the last two years. But now, a lot of land in Casco is just low, as you guys know.
It gets flat and not a lot of ditch slope and the water doesn't want to travel quickly.
I mean, that's, we, we get calls and I think some of the sand is just inherently low unless if they put in investment into their properties.
Well, that's, that's the other thing, we have a lot of drains where, I mean, let's face it, you know, an eighty-year-old widow's not going to get out and maintain a drain. Okay, the trees are going to grow, the brush is going to grow. That's where we come in, we can come in and, and help out. And she won't, the, the cost is spread out amongst the whole drain district. What does upset us is when we get these landscaping or, you know, mowing companies and they mow and they just blow everything into ditch because the leaves, the grass, all that decomposes and ends up being built.
So if a property owner here has a county drain, they could clear out debris, that's, that's fine. Okay, I'm prepared and it's encouraged.
We promote it, and you know, I, I hate to see something going with a tractor and ditch it, but, you know, they're gonna, they would have to touch the banks. I prefer they call us and we'll get in and help out. But, um, yeah, pull the trees out, cut brush down, all four. Love to see that happen, because they actually, the property owners, own the trees. That easement is not, we don't own that easement. We have an easement that allows us to come in and work on your property, that's all your property.
What's the, what, what is the general easement?
So that's these numbers you see here, so this, like, Casco Drain, it says fifty E S, that's fifty each side of center. Fifty feet each side of center, some of them will say T, I don't know if you guys have any or not. If it says T, that's just total easement.
It's just what?
Total, so generally you can cut in half and let's see the size of it.
Yeah, that half is actually on the website.
Yeah, sure.
Same for, no.
Yep, it is, you can go to the department, look up drain commissioner, then go to the products and.
Once our website's back up, we'll go link on ours.
Take it there.
Now, um, this, this year you're going to be doing work in the Peters.
They did the first half, they're hoping that it dries out, they got that opened up so that it could get some of the water out. And then they're going to take it back all the way over to, with that animator.
Can you explain more about the ownership of the trees on the easement? I mean, everybody's concerned about Edson coming through and racking all the trees down like.
Well, they typically won't go through a drain easement unless their power lines follow.
You're speaking of not a road, but a drain.
Not a road easement, but a, a drain easement. And we get a lot of city folk that move up and, you know, they bought the ten acres and it's wooded. And then we come in and what we try and do is give us, give ourselves a service quarter down one side of the drain. We'll cut everything on the banks, on both banks, but then we'll get like a twenty, twenty-five foot service quarter. And boy, I tell you, some people get really upset.
That's my deer hunting properties. If anybody ever says that to you, that becomes the deer highway when we're done.
Go plant some clover down and you'll have deer coming in constant. They take the path the least resistant, they'll walk right down along the drain.
Yeah, we've ruined a lot of hunting seasons and provided the best luck we've ever had the next year.
Few deer stands to say, oops, come get them, but, um, no, it, it, the property owner owns all the trees, okay? And when we come in, we'll cut down what we have to, lay them off to the side. They're welcome to take the wood or give the wood away, or we'll come back and burn them the next year because we'd rather dig more out and clear more than, you know, dig half or clear half and take care of the trees. But we'll wind roll them along the, the clearing everything. So it kind of can look tough sometimes, but eventually we get to it and clean it up. And, and we're real accessible, if anybody has a problem or a concern or a question, they call the office, call Tony, call Ashley, call myself.
I'm off to Luton.
You call the office and it's forwarded to me anyway, so.
He's getting out of Dodge.
You've, you've been very responsive whenever I had questions or concerns.
Whatever we can do to help.
Okay, and I've said this many times, if I had one thing I wish I had, a crew just assigned, all they did was clean ditches and drains in the township.
We have to.
All they did, so. Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Science? I know I'm speaking out of turn because of public comments that's from, but I want to hold things.
Well, no, a few have been.
No, hey. When you were talking about cleaning certain parts of a drain out, or a ditch out, who would get assessed?
The whole drain district.
The whole drain district?
Yes.
Even though it goes into two different townships?
Yep, both townships would get assessed, everybody in that drain district would get assessed. You're considered a partner, so it cuts the cost down for everybody. And, you know, if it's at the lower end and somebody lives in the other township, I mean, their water travels through there too. So if it's at the higher end, well, the people at the lower end kind of help pay for it as well to allow their water to travel down to where they're at.
Okay, in respect to the total drain that's proposed, the path of the county drain, what happens in that aspect?
So that's a water course, it's under the state jurisdiction, and they'll never come and clean. So it's up to the property owners, if there's a jam, to get in there and clean it, um, open it up. But again, you're talking trees that have been, you know, fallen that are this big around. You're not going to get a typical property owner to go in and open it up.
We all know why we're back in the run-up hill. And from years and years of settlement going into these pitches, whatever, it keeps building up. The water's not draining, her property, or her property, or mine.
Are you guys?
We're all on race in the road, toward a total drain.
So we, we found that when it's not a drain and it's just a water course, right, that's what this would be considered, it's just a water course. So like you said, state would have jurisdiction over any permitting, but landlords want to landscape their property, they can't. A lot, a lot of times what we run into is, you know, these four people all want something done and then this person, don't come out of my property. And that, that happens a lot. And a lot of the, get, that gets, gets stressed, we did this in Virgible Township. The issue was that one person and they were worried about liability. So they weren't worried about the cost, they just said, I don't want somebody to hurt on my property. And I understand that, as property owner, I understand that too. And so if you can get a document that says, hey, we'll get a machine in here, we'll sign a waiver that says you're indemnified from any liability. A lot of times they let you come in and pull out some dead fall. Now, if there is dead fall down in the creek, we'll call it, anything that touches the bottom, you can't pull out of the bottom. That's.
Habitat.
Habitat.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Anything, any branch that lands down in the dirt in the bottom of a creek, you can't pull it out of the creek. You can cut it flush above the bottom and pull it out, but that's the state's stance on things. That is habitat for amphibious creatures and.
Really?
Yeah.
All the rules and guidelines.
Yeah, yeah.
It gets crazy.
Yeah, they're getting bigger every year.
Well, you know, again, we're ha- happy to take a look at the TELTO drain and see if people are, you know, it's been almost forty years. So maybe residents have changed and more people want to see it happen. We're happy to do that, just.
I'll make them wait you off. If you need it in terrain.
Oh, I bet.
Having to plunge out of yards and everything, ditch them a half day.
Some folks go, some folks go around the clock.
How long does the water take to go away?
Two and a half days.
The TELTO drain.
You might just have a beaver dam. We have a lot of beaver dams down here.
What you have on the TELTO drains, it's, it's the deepest in front of my house. When it's right to the top, a day and a half and it's flowing again.
So it's right to the top, that's probably go to ten-year storm that you'd be going down.
Yeah. But they get it worse, by the time it hits the corner of Meldrum and Springborn and it's flowing, it will, it will recede within a day. There's a little blockage as you cross, um, Springborn Road to where the beaver dam is or wherever, that's never been cleaned out. But I just, it's, it's much worse where you are. By the time it gets to me, it's flowing, but it's never crested. One time in, one time in forty-five years that I've been living there, it came up over the ditch.
So it becomes more of a civil matter between property owners. So let's just say she has a blockage in her drain and obviously she's not going to go out with chainsaws and cut a tree. Oh, that's just, yeah, right. So she lives next door to her and it hits the tree and the blockage and backs up onto her yard. Technically, this neighbor could notify that neighbor, your blockage is damaging my property. I'm putting you on notice to where if it does continue and damages it, I'm going to hold you responsible. And you have to go to court, so, you know, I hate to see that kind of stuff happen.
It gets to be a civil matter.
It does.
But when, when would the township get involved?
Well, you've got ordinances and I don't, you know, some ordinances will cover, you know, stuff like that. And if you have an ordinance, you can actually send an ordinance enforcement officer down there that says, you know what, you, your water course is not operating properly. You kind of represent the people that are being damaged. But I don't want to throw it in your lap either, it's really between neighbors.
I, I've gone on many, I've had to tell many, many people, you have to get together and work this out.
That's the best way to do it.
And a lot of times somebody from a neutral position, like I, I, like I said, I've gone out for non-drain issues and I just had a conversation with them, like, hey, this is an issue, they want to come in and clean it out, would you give them permission if you were held, you know, indemnified from it? Yeah, no, I just, I don't have the means to do it, I don't have equipment to do it. And, you know, you have, very TELTO rate.
I get calls, I'll get calls all the, um, quite frequently, especially lately about it. And I'll go out there, but on some matters, I can tell them, you have to get with your next door neighbor, you've got to work this out together.
It's, the community service here. So there are guys with equipment that kind of, you know, get in trouble and have to do a community service and they've got equipment. They can actually donate their time and equipment and it goes towards days that they, they work. If you can get permission from the property owner for somebody like that to go on and pull the stuff out. I've done that, it works great.
Yeah, I remember you, among the brains here, you go, you had some people in community service cleaning them. Okay, is there any, any other questions or comments? Okay.
Very informative, you know, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Joe.
And don't ever hesitate to give our number out to have people call us because, you know, we may not be able to help, but we sure are good at telling what to, you know, where to go or.
Our emails are on the bottom of the drain commission website, just, I'm Tony, I think it's just Tony on there, Anthony's my name on the cards, but thanks, I'm Tony. I know, it was on Robert or Bob, honestly.
Bob, probably.
It's just.
Yeah, my email's T.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Why is your name not on the ballot?
Yeah, why is that?
Well, you really might know.
Yes, I do.
I was late turning in my financial statement. And while I was there, I turned it, that was something, it was due the thirty-first. I turned my ballot in on the eighth, or not my ballot, but my financial statement. And while I was there, you know, it was a hundred fifty dollar fine to, because I was late, I had the wrong checkbook, I had my personal one, I mean, my committee. So that being said, I said, I'll come back tomorrow. Well, then I asked, who's running against me? And she said, well, look, hey, nobody.
Nobody.
Right, so I thought, who ran? So I said, what do I have to do to run? She said, fill this paperwork out, so I filled it out and handed it to her, and then she went and time stamped it. Now, she time stamped it, it's a little box, it says, all fees and fines are paid, rather than holding it, and it's not her fault because I'm the dummy that brought her on checkbook in. She, uh, she time stamped it and with all, with all the accusations of, you know, voter fraud and all that garbage. You know, I wasn't going to go pick her the next day and then have that timestamp, which was after the first timestamp. And the state says, well, yeah, I gotta take his name off the ballot, so now I'm running as a write-in.
All right, well, we knew, that just kind of freaked me out.
Fill in the dot and Bob Wiley, Robert Wiley, Bobby Wiley, any derivative of Robert.
All right.
Any, but B Wiley, we actually have a Bobby Wiley that works for the, the.
County IT.
County IT, but.
It's a lot of, you know.
Bob or. She's just responding. W I L E Y, so. I wasn't going to put it out there, but since you asked, I'm going to be absolutely transparent.
I have had a little upset about.
D Wiley, no, Bob Wiley.
Call you out, Charlie will call you out.
I will, well, you know who that happened to this, last year?
Who's that?
If you looked at your tax bill, the Veterans Administration. They did not get their millage this year because they didn't get their paperwork in time.
I was, I got my paperwork in.
But anyway, that's, when everybody got their taxes this year, it was zero for veterans. And I don't know how many.
No, it has to be, it's a percentage of the, the population.
Really? Anyway, well, good to know, I thought maybe you just decided this job wasn't worth it.
No, it has, it's, actually, I, it, it's a, a great, I mean, when I help people, I don't feel great, but then there are people that really hate me because, well, you know, they get big assessments.
But you can't please everything.
I try, I really do, but it's hard.
Well, all the assessments on all the drains this year on our township added up to sixty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. So, and that's, that's taking care of the Casco Drain, the Meldrum Drain, the Volmer Drain, the Hessam, the Weber, the Badwell, the Volmer and the Pelton.
And you can thank Tony and Ashley for that because we've been.
Trying to keep everything moving.
Well, and, you know, you do the best you can and you got to know the river's going to rise the day after it rains for eight hours. You know, and just don't panic.
Oh, and we can't hide the lake levels, we would not believe the phone calls from Clay Township.
Oh, yeah.
I can't handle the lake, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Crazy. You always take care of your animals.
Tony, I'll be calling you about an issue on the Richmond.
Wait for Richmond Columbus?
Yeah.
That's in Eric County, so we'll have to, let me know what the issue is, just send me an email if you want.
Yeah, there's, I'll get with you my zoe's, there's a clog down there that's.
We can do clogs.
Maybe we can do a clogger.
Do clogs.
Thank you.
You guys have a great night. Appreciate it. Now watch, when, when Bill's here, he's going to blame us, that's how it goes.
Yeah, it's all right.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right, the next is our annual use from Michigan Township Association. I, uh, Michigan Township Association are a progressive organization that represents the township in different matters. Their political action committee represents the interests of townships in the state of Michigan, Lansing. We also provide support for the townships in many different ways, educational stuff, questions, um, training. I use them quite a bit, I call them up and I think your service is fantastic. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I, I just think, um, we should definitely use their legal defense fund when they can since it's only a hundred and thirteen dollars for the year and when we call our attorney, it's, you know, a lot more expensive. So if there's anything we can do to call them first, I mean, obviously there's stuff that we have to do through our attorney. Any kind of, you know, if you have a quick question or something, I think we should use that.
I think it's a good idea because we're, we're making lots of calls. So, okay, no, I think that legal defense, so we are currently getting, what do we have right now, do we have the premium?
We don't have, we just pay the, the regular. We don't have, we just pay the, the regular, we don't do any of the extras.
Okay, okay, we do the reg, do the regular plus the legal defense.
Plus the legal defense.
Okay, so that comes out to both of those things, the three thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and forty-nine cents per year.
I move to pay our dues in the amount of three thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and forty-nine cents and with the inclusion of the ODF fund.
Ask for.
Okay, we have a motion to support to, to renew our annual dues with Michigan Township Association along, the annual dues along with the annual defense fund for a total of three thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and forty-nine cents. We'll call both.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
So, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next one is high-tech renewal for sofos protection. Is this is the software that keeps the bad people away? You know, our, because we're always, on our IT systems, you're having people constantly trying to breach through the security, and we have to renew this. And high-tech has been very good, and can we do have issues with this? So, any questions?
I make a motion to approve the renewal of the SOPOS protection for one thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars. Ask for.
Okay, we have a motion to support for renewal of the, um, the SOPOS protection for one thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars. We'll call both.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
So, yes.
Okay, next one is a bond revoked permit twenty-three dash zero zero nine, um, four nine of the Brinkers. We have a letter here, expired building permit, recreation bond expired June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Dear Mr. Brinker, building permit, said number was issued on May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three for expired building permit, which was issued on June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. The two hundred fifty dollar bond was carried over for the project. There's been no progress, no inspections, conducted since issuance of the permit number, the permit. Therefore, permit twenty-three dash zero four nine is expired revoked, and I will present the bond amount to be revoked by the township board in June two thousand twenty-four, June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Okay, that was sent out by our building official Roland Sues.
If I may make a comment?
Yes, please.
Um, we don't come across these instances very frequently. But most recently, we did bring before you another address on Puttigat Road. We have another gentleman on St. Clair Highway that we've been dealing with this issue time and time again. So when we reach this point, and the bond is revoked, and all permits have been expired and revoked, Roland and I and Katie aren't sure what recourse legally we have for these folks to complete the project. In this particular instance, Roland has observed, and, and I drove by, this addition project is well over a one hundred thousand dollar project. The bond was two hundred and fifty dollars. Mr. Brinker let the first permit that was issued in two thousand twenty-one expire. He did have inspections, but everything expired. Roland allowed him to reissue another six months, the bond we carry over. In that last six-month period since permit number twenty-three zero zero four nine was issued, we had no communication whatsoever and no inspections called for. So what would the board, what direction legally, or what opinion from the five of you? We can't just drop these things.
Did he respond to this letter at all?
Yes, he came in, and I anticipated that he might be here this evening. I did tell him when he came by, Roland tried to reach him, and he didn't answer, so he came into the office when Roland wasn't there. So I told him that one of two things will happen. The board may revoke his bond. Roland is willing to reissue yet again. If the board revokes, he's gonna pay a new bond and all new permitting fees. If the board decides not to revoke his bond, we will again carry it over, and he will still be responsible for all new permitting fees. But with the other gentleman on Puttigat Road, stop work orders were issued. Letters from the attorney finally prompted the completion. So we're kind of in a conundrum. We don't know what, what latitude we may have without endangering the township legally by stepping too far.
So what did he say today?
Uh, he didn't show up.
Oh, no, I mean, when he came to see you.
Uh, he just, he, I, I just told him this is what's gonna happen.
Oh.
Um, and he's not here, so.
Your permits are a chunk of change, right?
Uh, his permit, I think we've had a interview.
Yeah.
It's a very, yeah.
It started in twenty-one.
Yeah, it started in twenty-one.
Yeah, he has to have no inspections.
Six hundred and seventy-five.
You read tag?
Pardon me?
Do you do a stop order if there's no progress, no inspection, or progress without inspections?
I can't stop, I can't stop, but all I can do is cancel permit. You know, I can't, I can't stop.
Even without inspections, that's not enough to stop the construction?
After six months with no inspections, then we can cancel the permit. Or a letter from him, sometimes they'll send a letter. There, there lies a lot of our problem, I think, with, with our bond system. Nobody likes bonds, but a two hundred fifty dollar bond for a, a bad thing like he has, my God, you know, that's like.
Yeah, I agree, I agree about the bonds.
So, and we came up with this other thing that.
But continuing construction and there's no permit, that's not a problem? You can enforce.
Well, it could be a legal problem, certainly, but, I mean, I don't think the township's gonna take it to court. We have not the best, and we got a guy on St. Clair Highway, Mr. Steeler. My God, nothing's been going on for six or seven years.
Yeah.
I was trying to work with.
Don't you know, perhaps if we did this once on a, on a more, on a important item, it might prove useful for the future. If, you know, if it's known that we can do it, and in some instances, we're willing to do it. Go to court.
Yeah, his first permit, the total was with, was six hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I believe that included the bond. Last permit, it looks as though it was only three hundred dollars. Well, not only, I don't say that lightly, but he had, he called for nothing. So he, he satisfied the requirement, in what it appears to me, with no intention of, you know, upholding his obligation to.
Is he occupying a building that doesn't have an occupancy or?
But that he's living in it.
Yeah.
Specifically mild, you know, so they're still in it.
Beautiful.
And, and to his credit, it's a beautiful job. I mean, everything he's done in there.
But he's not called for any inspections or?
Well, I've had inspections, um, up to a point, but then it went away.
He's not gonna be insured, and something happens.
Yes.
He's not gonna be insured. We'll get to that later.
I don't know, I don't even know, I don't even know if he could do that. I mean, I've thought about that before, insurance company that.
No, I know, he's not gonna be insured, because he's not a. We're starting to, are you starting to see increased? Are you starting to see a more increased frequency of?
No, not, no, but it, it just creates a problem for those who do what they're supposed to do.
Yeah.
Right.
No, it should be.
You know, he got away with it, so.
Right.
Was two hundred and fifty bucks or?
So he's still, he's still working on, on the building.
Well, when I drove by, it looks done. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what's all going on inside. But the garage is completed. I'm sure he's parking his car in the garage.
He wasn't that far away, it's kinda in the north side.
So it says the second, second story, that's the second story on the house.
Yeah.
And that's down too?
Looks like, oh.
Okay, alright. Okay, what's the board?
It, it seems like there should be some kind of recourse that the township can take on things like this. I know we've talked before about, you know, putting names on, on stuff. I don't know if that's something we can do, but, I mean, he doesn't care about two hundred and fifty dollars, obviously.
Well, that's what I think.
I mean, we revoke it, and I'm what?
Well, that's, well, one, I think we need to up the bonds. I think they're too low. And two, I can make a call to the legal defense side.
That would be very good.
So he, he hasn't had any inspections, so?
Not in the last six months.
I have a quick list.
Not since we renewed the bond, that isn't it?
No.
Now, we'll, we'll get to questions at the end of that.
When we reissue, he has not called, no indication whatsoever.
Okay, alright. So what's the board's, uh?
I think you have to call today.
Yeah.
I think there's four old avenues of enforcement that are open to us, and what pressure we can apply, and also look at the bond amount. So I think you've made some recommendations.
Yeah, well, we talked about that before.
But this particular one, what's, what are you, what, what's the board want to do for Mr. Brinker here?
Does it matter if we wait a month and find out from the MTA? Because what if we revoke it, and that's not really the way we should do it?
Okay.
Well, the bond is revoked. It was revoked when you, when we issued the second permit.
Okay.
The bond was near revocation.
Okay.
So, I mean.
What I'd do is cancel the permit right now.
Well, well, it is revoked, and the code does say that the, uh, bond can be revoked.
It's just, this is the book revoked the bond.
So if you decide you do not wanna revoke the bond, until you hear from MTA, we can carry the bond over, and then he'll pay probably the three hundred dollars all over again. So whatever.
But if we revoke it, then he'd have to repay the bond and the house.
And let's revoke it.
Revoke the bond.
I make that one.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion to revoke the bond and support. This is for government twenty-three dash zero zero four nine.
And then you'll need your guidance as to what legal or recourse.
Yes, yes.
Well, it'll be noted on the assessment card that whatever bonds were listed there were revoked. So if he goes to sell the house, or whatever else that the new owner will know, that this addition has not been inspected or approved. It gives protection to the new homeowner. I don't know what, doesn't give him any protection.
Hey, I'm, I'm gonna check over here, and I'm gonna bill check you.
Especially, you know, on these three miles, you have a phone friend tomorrow. If they have a family, it always scares me, because they got the kids playing on the net.
Yeah.
There's nails, there's opening.
No, we're current set two. Maybe not, we're current by the homeowner's insurance. If they, something happens, and they don't do everything right?
I mean, I kinda doubt that they'll, you know, I really don't.
Okay, okay, we, we had a motion and support to revoke, um.
Support.
Okay, we'll call both.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
So, yes.
Okay, motion. Okay. Next one is new building permit requirements. Okay, we have it here. Currently, the township does not require building permits for new roof and siding installation. This is from our, um, building official Roland Sues. I am proposing requirement for building permits as follows. New roof, uh, plain fee review of thirty-five dollars, administrative, administrative fee of a hundred twenty-five dollar, and an inspection fee of seventy-five dollars per inspection, and a bond of two hundred and fifty. Siding, a plain review fee of thirty-five dollars, administrative fee of a hundred twenty-five dollars, and an inspection fee of seventy-five dollars per inspection, and a bond of two hundred and fifty. I anticipate one or two inspections for each rent, depending on the scope of work. Roland, could you give me some reasoning why you want these new permits?
Well, the permits aren't new, they're in the code book. I've never pushed that, just about every township has it, except maybe me, I don't know, maybe a couple other guys. And the reason I haven't pushed it is because a lot of these roofs are on and off in the day. You don't even know they're there. They're in, in the morning and out at night, and so on and so forth. But we've had calls, and they want inspections on them. And if, you know, in the cities especially, they're pretty easy to catch and watch. You know, when people are around here, you don't know, see them, for the most part. There is a situation now where we're doing insulation a little bit different. And there's different kinds of, of venting in the roofs and so on. And I think it, it seems to me that I should be enforcing what's in the book, that, that we are under the MRC book.
What kind of problems are you seeing with the roofs now? What kind of problems do you expect to find through an inspection and muzzle?
Through inspection? Well, depends on what they did as far as tearing off the roof and so on, whether they went over two or layers, three layers of shingles. For the most part, most of these guys, and, you know, they're pretty reputable, really. But I, I'm still looking at the other aspects, though, where people do call in for inspections on them.
You?
It is, it, 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 over and above the township, it's in the code book, that, that they are required.
Then why haven't we been doing them for the last thirty years?
No, they haven't.
No, we haven't.
Why not?
We have never charged anybody for window replacement or new shingle in all roofs. And now we're going to charge them thirty-five, a hundred and twenty-five, seventy-five, and two hundred and fifty dollar bond. And we've never, we've never enforced this before. And if people would hire reputable building contractors, I, I, this, this is window replacement and shingle replacement. I don't like to hold up a project. I don't like to charge the people in the township all of this extra money on a window replacement and shingle replacement.
Do you know?
Well, I think that what siding here is, looking at siding.
Siding, yes, siding, windows.
I, I could see inspecting a roof before siding. I mean, that just.
I know.
Well, it's, it's in the code book, I mean, that's all.
Yeah, but it's, if it's been in the code book, then we should have been doing it for the last thirty years, and we haven't.
And not everybody did for, for years, I mean, it's.
I, I, I.
I believe in advising people to hire licensed contractors, local contractors, if you can.
That know what they're doing.
And even, yeah, even with that, in this high wind, I think I lost half the shingles on my roof, but that's my problem.
I don't, yeah, I just don't.
I don't.
I, I would just hate to nitpick residents and.
This is, this is, this is.
I guess my equation is, is the money worth spending to do this? And, and what's the gain in spending money to have all these inspections? And also to have people pay the funds to get the inspections? It doesn't seem like there's a, a good cost benefit for anyone there. It doesn't seem like you'll find much, because of, the contractors that are around here are pretty good.
Yeah.
And it doesn't seem like you'll save a lot of people, a lot of grief, except you'll cost them, you know, some bucks.
In time.
And also.
Believe it or not, that the contractors like the inspections too, and they do like.
I suspect that might be true.
Yeah. And also too, I mean, they've got, if there was a job that wasn't done correctly, there's other avenues of remediation, like small claims and, and all that. I just, I, I just don't wanna, like I said, nitpick and hit up the residents with mortgage fees or that. I know it's well-intended, Roland.
We already have a law that's confused.
Yeah, yeah. So. Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
There is no motion, there is no action.
No action required.
No action required. Okay. New bond requirements. New bond requirements. Okay, here is, okay, from Roland Sues, building officials, we cast the township board request, these increased bond amounts for additions and remodels. Currently, the bond amounts for addition remodels are charged at $250. In my opinion, this fee is not enough to ensure progress for completion in timely manner. One of the most, most important issues for an addition or remodel is the cost of the project and ability to have the funds to complete it. The current $250 amount is not significant enough to promote progress with a final certificate of occupancy being issued. Attached, please find in red for your consideration for proposed bond amount for additions and remodels. In addition, all current applicable ambitions to all current applicable charges. So, okay. Residential homes addition and remodels up to 1,200 square feet, it would be a $75 plan review, $125 administration zoning fee inspection, and $75 per inspection. And then the, these are only the ones in red, right?
Only the ones in red are the change. Everything in black is the way it was.
The immediate.
So it's just the red ones.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
I mean, costs have gone up.
Yes.
And we do want to have a little bit of consequence, we want a little bit of think that.
Well, it's like the one we just revoked.
Yeah.
If he had to pull a little more money out, he might.
I agree. In fact, there are certain other areas, those are the three elements that we may want to consider.
Those bonds are, are lovely, the people can get back and stuff.
Yeah, they do get.
Right. Right. If you try to get the work, it's in, they give it back.
Right.
So these are all bonds? And these are, these are all bonds?
These are bonds that return back when the work is finished.
CVO is issued.
And the money comes back.
There are certain times, mostly for new homes, where, let's say the culvert was not correct and the county has to come back and do a reinspection. We will give them the CVO for occupancy, but we hold the bond so that they make sure they do what the county has required of them and then they get the bond back, you know.
And do you find the county comes out in a reasonable amount of time to check that culvert? And they're good about that?
Yes. We have a real good relationship with the county.
That's good.
Well, the only camera that we can use that helps finish up the, anything other than that.
Yeah.
Well, you've seen.
Yeah, I know, but as long as they get the bond back when the work is done and the road commission comes and checks that culvert so they're not blocking up the whole darn road, then this is fine.
All right.
I make a motion that we adopt the new reschedule with the items in red.
Okay.
For the bonds.
And when would you want that effective? Because it will affect Mr.
Effective today.
It will affect Mr. Brinker.
Okay.
Did you have any today or should we do it effective tomorrow?
Whatever. It's up to you.
Well, did you issue anything today? Because if you did, then I can do it today.
No.
So effective today, June 11. And I'll support that.
Okay, we have motion support to, to approve the revised performance bond and fees for remodels and, and home additions and new homes.
We do have one that Katie has called and they have not yet to come in to get the permit. We will hold them to what it was.
Yes, yes. That's only fair.
We called and we told them what it was.
Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Steven Chess.
So, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next one is tree and stump removal quotes. These are for, we have a number of trees on the south and west property line that need to come down in order for us to construct the new addition.
I have a question. Why do the trees on the west side of the building have to come down? Is that integral to the building?
Yeah, because the, the new addition comes out and off the building, so they're.
Even the ones up here?
No, there's only one tree. The ones towards the front are keating. If they're, if they're even with the building, they need to come down.
So the ones towards the front we keep and that, those have to come down.
On the west side.
These ones on the south side.
The south side, they're all coming down.
We're not even going anywhere past that.
Those are coming down. Two of them are half dead.
Okay.
And we're there anyways. And the building closest to the west property line than this to the south property line.
Right.
Because that was the thing with the, the architectural there, so.
But then we're going to have overhanging trees over a brand new building and it's just going to cause damage over time.
Okay, we have three quotes, one from advanced tree experts for the $3,400. This is to cut down the trees, grind the stump, the stump, remove all the material along with the chips out of here.
Not all the chips, but some of the, I'm trying to get all of them because I don't want to mix into my grade because they just cause problems later. It deteriorates, break down, and pretty soon I got a grade that's in the nest, so.
In advance, they're willing to do, how soon do they start?
All of them are within a week or two out.
Okay.
That's what I, all right.
Right, maybe advance.
Right here, three, four.
Is it 3,400 or 3,400?
Yeah. So quite a difference.
Yes.
And then we have expert, tree service for $6,000, and then we have active tree experts for $5,405.
Kurti Helgo approached me way back when, as you well know, and he wants to grade the situation over there. And he said those trees, oh, he's like to do a lot of that.
Mr. Baumgarten, who owns the property, I mean, some of the trees fall in our line, some of this is, he has no problem listing them.
Did you get that written?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Do you guys need a guide?
Yes, please.
That did make a big difference over there. So.
Okay, do we have the A yet?
Kurt, what, what's, you mapped with these three, right?
Yeah.
What's your feeling on it?
My feeling is going with the cheapest one, I mean, $2,000, $2,500 difference, I mean.
Right.
It's, it's all pretty much the same. They pretty much all told me the same thing. Yeah.
I bet you can't. She wanted to know if she could do wood chips.
I don't like these wood chips. They're going to be all mixed in dirt because they're bringing the stump.
Yes.
So dirt's going to be, dirt's going to be mixed in with the wood chips, is what I mean. Bring your truck, I'll load you up. Hey, if you want. All right, I guess.
Look at you.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the, the quote from advanced tree experts to remove 13 trees and grind 13 stumps in the amount of $3,400.
We have a motion support to, to cut down the 13 trees and remove the trees and the stumps and all the, the chips for $3,400. They roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kozinski, yes.
Steven Chess.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, citizen comments? Says anybody would like to address the board? Any?
No.
Other? Okay, Mr. Simon.
Chair Simon, I'm actually right in the road. I'd like to thank the board for bringing up the, now.
Are you going to be here next month or?
I plan on, I've got no. So, interesting.
All right, anyone else? Okay, board comments? Kelly?
No.
Dan? Okay, listen up, I have a thing. The road commission, they're going to be, they ought to be finishing, they'll work on Marine City Highway, the southern termine at VT Road, that ought to be wrapping up in about the next week to 10 days.
Oh, next week?
Yeah. Hey, guys. And lastly, the grass shit rebuild will be, something, sometime after the 4th of July, they're thinking more time like in August. When they do it, only the northbound traffic will be allowed. Reason why they don't want any full trash trucks, they're directly down 26 mile road. Now, empty trash trucks could go up grass shit, the division road, but so in the construction, it'll take about a month, 30 days to do that grass shit rebuild. So it's only going to be northbound traffic at that time, from County Line to Division Road. Okay.
Does anyone know what's happening down St. Clair Highway down South Bottoms?
Yeah, they're replacing a culvert there right before King Road.
Oh, just a culvert?
Yeah, they'll be finishing that up soon.
Okay.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A motion, all favor?
Thank you, everyone.